November fourteenth, twenty twenty-three, Air Planning Board meeting. First item is, of course, to approve the agenda.
Move to approve the agenda.
Seconded.
What's up?
Can we make an amendment?
Yeah, well, as I said, yes, we can.
I can't second it?
Yes, you can.
Yes, you can. It's fine. But we're gonna have an amendment.
Yes.
Discussion phase.
Yes, we just wanted to make amendment to the general business to add the Devon's Resolution Committee to, for the appointment of the second member.
Took you long enough.
Two weeks.
Let's not forget it. Yeah, I'm just gonna put it at the end where we, when it comes up, so I'll know. Okay, good. So, is that acceptable? Friendly, friendly? Great. Any further discussion on the agenda? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. We're good to go. The first matter to come up is a public meeting for thirty-three Third Street. And sir?
Good evening. My name is Kevin Conover. I'm from David Ross Associates. I represent Third Street Nominee Trust, presenting an approval required plan to the Planning Board tonight for endorsement of three lots on the south westerly side of Third Street. All three lots conform to the frontage and area requirements. The minimum frontage is a hundred feet, not strict. The minimum area is twelve thousand, so we exceed the twelve thousand foot threshold, and we have a hundred feet of frontage. There's an existing house on the lot that, at the time we prepared this plan, was there. It's not there anymore. It's been removed. On our plan, we designated it to be removed, but kind of piers to the punch. That's okay. So, we're looking for approval and our required endorsement for this three-lot A and R.
Good, thank you. Lita, take us away on this?
So, on this one, I did, we did a review. There was some, you know, minor revisions that we had requested, and they've changed those. So, now, you know, Lot Three is labeled as Lot Three. There's a note at the bottom that was changed from, it said, "In addition to the town air, town air building inspector," it's been changed to "building commissioner." And then, there was also a request about figuring out whether or not there was an existing easement for the sewer line that runs through there, which there is not.
There's not.
And on that...
So, with regards to that easement, there's a sewer line that bisects the property. It appears on the plans that were provided to us by the DPW and the town engineer. My client has no problem putting that in an easement for the town to maintain it and use it. It's just a matter of what size that easement would be, what is the width of it that's gonna help take care of it. But there's existing sewer manholes there. They've been present for a long time. I've known about that sewer line for many years, and it's only in an easement on a couple pieces of property adjacent to Grove Pond. Obviously, this isn't one of them. But my client'd be more than happy to put that in an easement and grant it to the town for access for maintenance, repair, or installation of a new sewer line.
Thank you, Kevin. And Danny, the issue of the easement, though, doesn't inhibit us from endorsing the plan, right?
No, because they, so if they are going to give an easement, they're gonna have to do a record plan for the easement, which would come later, Danny, once that's agreed.
Right. An easement plan doesn't have to come back to the Planning Board. It's a surveyor certificate plan, so it doesn't require a planning board endorsement.
Okay, great.
Has the DPW requested that yet?
Not yet. Again, we haven't had conversations about the size of it. I mean, obviously, it's there, and it should be in an easement. And I think it's in the town and my client's best interest to put that within an easement, whether it's thirty feet wide, twenty-five, whatever he feels is best, or they feel is best.
Okay, great. The crickets are chirping. Does anyone on the, any of my board colleagues have any questions or comments for Mr. Conover?
He covered mine. The building's not there.
It's not there.
Julie?
No.
Nathan? Ken? Well, great. Do I have a motion to endorse?
Move to endorse.
Seconded.
Thirty-three Third Street, map thirty-four, parcel seventeen's A and R.
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Yes.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Good luck, Mr. Conover.
So, here's the original in here, so I don't know if you're gonna assign it now or pick it up later.
Is the Mylar?
Mylar's in here, yeah.
Let's do it.
Yeah.
You have a Sharpie, Liz?
He has one right there.
You got a Sharpie, even?
Yeah.
This one's a pro.
My first work.
Thank you, sir.
So, there's the Mylar. But they all did something. I don't believe so. These guys required three full-size.
No, so what we'll do is, if you, so sign this one, and then we'll do this once it gets recorded.
Good evening, sir. How are you?
Recorded version.
Do I have to sign these?
No.
And do I, do I date this or leave that blank for now?
You can date that, because it was signed today, so that's fine.
It's eleven fourteen, right?
Correct. Yes.
They don't always go this fast. I got a lot of it out before. The questions we dealt ahead of time. I'm assuming three simple handles? So, two duplexes, the third one is gonna be empty for now.
Excellent. So, sign the original, the Mylar, and then the provider.
Because we want the recorded version.
I understand. He'll just copy that one.
Yeah, we do, upstairs, on the second floor.
Oh, that, that's the one in front of Alan's office?
Yep, exactly.
How's it going, Julie?
Pretty good.
How's Scott doing? Okay?
Yeah. Hanging in there.
Good.
More and more houses coming in. More and more units.
Yeah, it's not like there's two houses. There's demand, there's demand. Thank you, Mr. Conover. Yes, the next item on our agenda is to open the public hearing.
Already opened.
It's already, no, I'm sorry, not to open, to continue the meeting for Stratton Hill. And I want to acknowledge that the applicant, Mr. Dave Moulton, passed away, and I believe October twenty-eighth.
Yeah, yeah, about two weeks ago, yeah.
And I just wanted to take a second to say, on two levels, on a professional level, you know, I appreciate that Mr. Moulton was always cooperative, helpful, you know, an excellent applicant before this board, and I always appreciated his contributions to our meetings. And on a personal level, I've spent numerous hours at Rocky Hill in Groton, and that's a property managed now by Mass Audubon. But it exists because it was a gift from Mr. Dave Moulton, and it exists appropriately as a record of his generosity. So, I just want to acknowledge that for his friends, his family, our community, and I wish his family the best, and I'm sure it must be a very difficult time. That said, representatives for the applicant approach the table. Thank you.
Thank you. So, and thank you for your kind words, Jonathan. It was, it was one of those deals that, even though it was expected, it was unexpected, you know, it happened much quicker than we all anticipated, but, but thank you. And I know his value passing on to his family as well. So, this is the first time that we're actually talking about, even though this isn't the initial hearing, because we weren't able to come to that, for a project that we've talked about quite a bit over the last couple of years, and virtually everybody here, except for Danny, has heard me go on and on and on, so I'll be fairly brief, because we are all fairly familiar with this site. So, this is the remaining portion of seven hundred and twenty acres that Dave Moulton purchased twenty-four years ago. About fifteen years ago, we achieved a subdivision approval for thirty-five lots that occupied a much larger area than this proposal that is pending. This plan is based on the many very worthwhile discussions that we had with this board over the last couple of years, and compresses the development area into fourteen point one lots, acres, excuse me, increasing the open space to a hundred and thirty-four point three acres, which backs right up to the four hundred and thirty-seven acres that were gifted to Mass Audubon, which, even though this won't go to Mass Audubon, having that large a block of open space is really of significance. I think it will end up going to either Fisheries and Wildlife, or the town, or a combination of the two. But having that size of open space that people can enjoy in perpetuity is going to really be a wonderful amenity as time goes on. This area has developed quite a bit in all of our lifetimes, and big areas where you could spend a whole day getting lost in what really seems like wilderness is going to be a rarity. So, it's nice that we'll have this at our doorstep. As part of the design, Mr. Moulton had wanted us to gift, in addition, all of the frontage that he owned on Long Pond, and to keep the houses away from that side of the site. So, you'll notice this actually has far more road than one would normally need for thirty-five lots, because we don't have any lots on one whole side, and that will all be publicly held land. There also is a small parking area that has been designated just the other side of the power lines that is near the beginning of an existing trail. So, it'll be a nice amenity for people to be able to enjoy. As part of all of this, we had proposed that there would be four affordable units, so two duplexes that are located on the plan, and so that'll add to the affordable housing mix that the town has. In addition, what we wanted to do was create a vegetative buffer for aesthetic purposes, separating the development area from right road itself, so as to minimize the impact on the, on the adjacent neighborhood. And to that end, we eliminated one of the two roads. Originally, this was a, essentially, a big horseshoe-shaped road network. We've eliminated one of them, because first of all, it eliminates the visual intrusion that a road presents, but also it adds more runoff. By doing it this way, we have a double-barreled boulevard entrance at the beginning that is a landscaped area in public land that then leads to this large loop, so it's essentially like a lollipop, but it does require a waiver under your subdivision regs. There are a couple of other minor things that I wanted, well, they aren't minor, but a couple of things that I should mention, benefits that in awe to the town as a result of this. First of all, this is an extraordinarily limited development approach to this site, as we've talked about in the past. If you did a density calculation utilizing the existing bylaws, I seem to recall the number, a hundred and seventy-nine units, it would be, you know, horrific in its impacts. Even if you left the development envelope that we have here, you actually could theoretically achieve in that something in the order of, I want to say, sixty-odd units of housing in that. So, this is actually a very limited development approach to have thirty-five units. In addition to the open space, which is a permanent amenity to the town, Dave, well, his company, will be working with the Department of Public Works, as we have been for a couple of years, regarding infrastructure upgrades. There is a lift station that actually needed to be upgraded regardless of this development. When we were here fifteen years ago, we were actually going to have our own lift station, and we had gotten in conversations with the DPW, thinking, why don't we just consolidate our efforts and help the town with funding for what they had to do anyway? And that's what we will be doing with this plan. Procedurally, just so that you know, we will need a new order of conditions. There is stuff that goes on within a hundred feet of the buffer, and the order of conditions for the prior subdivision, first of all, wouldn't be applicable, because this is a different layout, but it has long since lapsed. The MEPA filing, there's a change order that I need to submit to MEPA. For reasons that are lost to history, the MEPA filing for this site was combined with the Groton site, which, of course, is ongoing still. So, I have to actually do a change. I believe they-
It's an NPC.
Yeah. It's like a change order that you submit, so that they understand, first of all, what they previously approved won't be built. I can't imagine that they will have a problem with it, because this compresses it, but it still needs to be filed. We also have to amend the conservation management permit that we already have, which, again, is for both municipalities. We have had conversations with the review biologist down at Natural Heritage, and I'm sure they'll have no issue with this. And with this configuration, as Ken knows certainly, we need a sign-off with National Grid. I've had conversations with them, but before you approve this, we need, if you were so inclined, we need to have a sign-off from them.
Preapproval.
Yes, yeah.
Thank you.
That, I think, is all I wanted to say, because, again, you've all heard everything that I've said, at least a half a dozen times in the past, so, and I'm sure almost everybody in the audience has heard it as well. But before we get to engineering stuff, you might have some questions.
I do. Thank you for this plan. And did you consider any alternative plans as well?
Well, you know, we did. It's funny you should bring that up. So, as you know, we had a design analysis that showed a hundred and seventy-nine lots. We had another one that showed sixty-odd units. We actually came up with a, I forget how many renditions of the site we've worked on, but we actually came up with this, which is very different in some respects, but some of it will look very familiar. This keeps all of the development on the southerly side of the power lines. It changes it from single-family housing to duplexes. It reduces the number of units to thirty-four, because I needed to keep a round number, and I thought that a single mixed in there would look ridiculous. I believe in order to make it work, I would need to reduce the affordables to two. We also would be looking for some degree of contribution, which there have been discussions about regarding the land on the other side, because, again, this is a different type of development. But it's worthwhile, I suppose, to put it up there. The other thing that, because perhaps you guys would be more enthusiastic about this, the other thing that I should point out, this uses the same road network, but uses the exact same drainage system that was actually reviewed and approved fifteen years ago. So, in a way, it simplifies things quite a bit. It also reduces the amount of impervious cover, because that drainage system was intended to serve a much bigger road network and a double-barreled entrance. If you recall, there's kind of a division right about where the power lines is on grades, so everything on this side comes in this general direction, but we originally had two roads coming in here, so this reduces impervious cover, because the connection between the two is shorter than, yeah, much shorter than the other. So, I suppose it's a worthwhile thing to show this to you. If this is something you would like us to pursue, we can put together the engineering fairly quickly on it, and it does change things. But I know that, one of the last conversations I had with my client on this subject was regarding how to introduce this, so I suppose the easiest way to do that is to just bring it in right up front and open the discussion to that, so, and hopefully, I won't get struck by lightning on the way home.
I don't think you will.
I'm not moving away from you.
So, I imagine, you know, see, immediately, the road is much shorter, much less impervious pavement. I imagine all the stormwater designs could be dramatically reduced in complexity. They're gonna be simplified, because there's less of that. I mean, overall, it's just a much simpler project to execute.
It really is.
Excuse me, Ken?
Please do.
I just wanna, I'm having different, A, I love it, I think, B, that's the AT, just looking at this, that's the AT&amp;T running in the middle?
Yeah, it is.
We call it the AT&amp;T easement, whatever it is. It's probably National Tele-
Zombie easement.
Yeah.
So, and then, and then the lines across the top, that's actually the power lines.
That's right.
So, the back ends of those, of the duplexes atop, that's like the lower end of the power line.
That's right.
Correct, yes.
That's right.
So, the road that's up there's gonna be just abandoned in place and turned back into-
Yeah, that'll be part of the trail network.
Thank you. I just want to make sure, I'm overlaying in my brain.
Yeah.
That's, that, that, yeah, that's the correct interpretation.
So, instead of, it ends-
Right here.
Right there. That's the backyards of those units.
That loop is kind of like in here.
Right there. That's right, Jonathan.
So, the road itself even stops significantly shorter of the power line easement.
Significant.
Yeah.
Much, yeah.
And that ends up, I believe you end up disturbing less than ten percent of the overall site, and I don't think you'll ever see that again from anybody. The fourteen point one acres, that was ten, a little better than ten percent, I don't think you're gonna see that either, but I know you're never gonna see this.
And what's the total acreage on, I'm sorry, what's the total acreage on this one?
It's, it's there, it's very small, and I didn't-
Six point eight acres, and then the right-of-way is one point nine.
So, two acres of road and seven acres of lots, so it's about nine acres.
Nine acres. A hundred and fifty acres.
Two thousand and five, you were looking at a hundred and seventy acres for development, and we're down to ninety.
Yeah.
Excuse me, before we go further, you're new to us, so would you like to do something?
I apologize. My name is Frank McPartland.
I'm Dylanson Roy. Stan is in New Mexico, and so Frank has been assisting me with all of this, and he decided to come tonight, because I needed somebody who could understand engineering things. Forgive me, I should have introduced you upfront.
I know enough to let you run, so.
So, so a couple of things. One is, first, I want to assure the public that there will be a time for contributions. I will solicit them, so I saw your hand go up. I just want the applicant to have the chance to present first, and then the colleagues, the board colleagues, to ask questions, and then I will open it up for public discussion. So, I clarify that. The second thing is that Mr. Collins has presented that, this to us, with the intent of discovering what our interest is in this. And I think it would be important for us to give him an indication, are we interested in pursuing this alternative? I will say, I will show my hand and say, I'm definitely interested, and I want to turn it to the rest of you to say, what do you think? Because, obviously, if we're interested in this, this changes the whole discussion about the engineering, et cetera, because we're in a new ballgame now. So, did you want to start, Jeff?
Well, I'm not, I am actually extraordinarily interested in pursuing this. I know it's very preliminary. I mean, it's, we're looking back at a, this is kind of the beginning of the preliminary we went through two and a half years ago, or whatever, it was three years ago, but I'm really, yeah, I'd like to, I would love to do this. I mean, I spent hours and hours and hours picking through that little TV text, and I've already folded it up, not gonna work on it tonight, so, yeah.
Julie?
I think it would be incredibly helpful to keep away from, I mean, those power lines were always just such a dead space in between then going to more lots, and even when I think of it as, I mean, I'm a resident of the area, but I mean, a resident of this space, it really separates a community that you were building, so, I mean, there's multiple wins there, and I'm just really open to continuing the discussion. We've had lots of lots, good ones and hard ones, but I am excited at that possibility.
Okay.
I guess I'd open up by saying I'm shocked, because I haven't heard about this until right now.
You didn't get that by my snuttering?
Yeah, exactly. Needless to say, we've had this discussion for quite a long time, so it's encouraging to see that you guys have taken a step to show us potentially an alternative. I just don't know what, are you just showing this as a preliminary thought? Are you trying to get a feeling for the board? I'm not sure.
Trying to get a feeling, if you like this. This is, the engineering is the same, so we would be able to put together what we needed to put together for a definitive pretty quickly. The engineering is all done.
No, it's not done.
Well, it's the same road network, that's the thing.
Every single house is in a different spot, so, I mean, you've got all, all kinds of different engineering.
Well, true, but from a vantage point, it's very, very close.
I agree with you, Ken. It is close, yes.
Yeah.
It's correct. It's not all already done, but quite a bit of it can be reused.
Right, it's not back to the drawing board.
It's not back to the drawing board.
We can put this together pretty quick.
And the, the development of a definitive based on this, with these comments in mind, would streamline, line the process as well, because a lot of, a lot of the outstanding comments on the engineering side can be incorporated and addressed here.
Just following up.
Yep.
So, just to follow up on what you said, for the public that's here, the comments you're referring to are the comments that we got back from our engineer that we hired as a consultant, our DPW, and other involved agencies in town regarding the original layout that you submitted already. So, what you're basically saying is, those comments were so thorough that you can use that thought process and those comments to enable you easier to get to the result of this smaller building.
Correct, and thank you for that clarification.
Yeah, so I just want to let people know, when you refer to comments, these are comments we have right here in front of us, that we were gonna talk about tonight, but we may not get to now, but they could help you in the-
They most certainly would, yeah.
-overall picture.
That's correct.
If I may, I'm gonna let you speak a second. Also, we can have a discussion about which of the things, if we were to say, yes, we're interested, you could pursue the engineering, which items remain relevant-
That's correct.
-and the stuff that, obviously, can be put aside, because they're no longer applied.
That's right.
I don't think Nathan's had a chance yet, has he? Have you? No.
Broadly, I'm indifferent. I think it's really the applicant's prerogative, based on what you, on the feedback you get from all parties. My main concern is the traffic on right road, and it's really not gonna change, so it's, in that sense, it's a wash. The, the benefit, I really, you know, I appreciate what Julie said about the community and the tight homes. You know, I think you'll get a lot of over-the-fence, I mean, these are soft benefits that aren't part of our bylaws.
No, that's right.
But-
It would be a community.
It'll be a community, you know, that, that close in, you know, I hope, you know, encourages people to know their neighbors in that type of a development. And then, I think, if we were to pursue it, I would like to see the public access brought back in, because of the, the trail network should be a detail, an engineering detail, if that's possible.
And, you know, one thing I neglected to mention, the template for the units, they're the units that Dave is building right now in Groton.
I've seen them.
So-
Still gonna be, I think, I mean-
And they are beautiful homes.
But it means people can see what it looks like.
You can actually see what they are, they're on the market right now.
They're the ones up on the high hill, right, over, no.
Down low.
Oh, the other side, down low, you're right, you're right. I stand corrected.
Yeah, Locking, no, no, Uppersing Bird, Hummingbird.
That's a movie you gotta be careful of.
You can actually go on Realtor.com and see the listings and see what the units look like.
Okay, everybody, just keep, okay, good.
So, in showing us this, this is clearly closer to what we've always talked about in the open-space residential development, where the- space residential development, where the clusters are closer and the road, everything is smaller.
Yeah.
So that's clearly, I think, an advantage. You do, however, you do, we'll need some special arrangement for the duplexes, I believe.
Yeah, I believe I'd need to file for a special permit on that.
With us?
That's with us.
With us.
And it is with you.
So it is with us. So it's, because I was going to ask it, not at a granular level, but at the high level, in order to execute on this, so the first thing is, special permit required for the duplexes in this zone. Okay, that's one. Are there any other special considerations we should be considering? Again, high level.
Shared driveways, but...
Shared driveways.
Right. But that's not, that's part of the...
That's an OSRD thing, OSRD.
It's within our purview.
It's within our purview, that's doable. Yep, that's doable.
If I may, through you, Mr. Chair?
Please.
I see this as a homeowners association.
Well, I'm glad you bring it up, because I do too. And actually, that would be another benefit for the town, that we would create an association, and the town wouldn't have to take care of this road network.
Now, to touch on that... If, I'm sorry, excuse me. Go ahead. When we get to the drainage calculation, the stormwater runoff like that, there's going to have to be O&amp;Ms for that.
Yeah.
So, but a homeowners association, we have a higher possibility of compliance to O&amp;M with a homeowners association as opposed to an individual house that is built. And if you, if I, your comment about the comments, this is like from C 4.2 all the way to the end, we, we take those away. I mean, they're...
That's a lot of comments.
It's like 10 pages of comments here that are single-spaced typed, about five pages just disappeared from this guy's. That's what Mr. Disken was talking about. And the E1 and stuff like that would disappear too, because you're grabbing the sewer.
It's relevant, right?
Yeah.
Because it's all gravity at this point.
Obviously, we're trying to put our heads around it.
Oh, yes, yes. I, I wouldn't commit to making those disappear yet without the grading being done.
Understood.
But, but...
Understood, yeah.
There, there were reasons that I had included them.
But, and then, you know, I would like to see, and this is way down the road, landscape plans and stuff like that, but we're basically, the footprint of the whole thing of nine acres of land for 17 buildings is the new way of looking at dens, higher density.
Yep.
And, and from a tax basis, this brings us money into the town without the cost of acres owning.
That's correct.
Which is the economist in me, which I like. Anyway, so I personally would like to pursue this as a member of the board.
Okay, so...
I'll be quiet, no?
No, 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 you can keep talking, I just wanted, so, we said yes, yes, you know, neutral, the way you described it, and then Julie was yes and yes.
But not negative.
Not negative.
Not negative, okay.
All right.
You have to choose at the end of the day.
He's saying it's up to you, because you're the applicant. So basically, that sounds to me like a green light for pursuing engineering on this, on this design.
Yeah, okay. That's kind of what I needed to hear.
Can I clarify? When you're saying green light means to proceed with, going forward with the planned process, it's not an approval of...
Oh, no.
Green light, do the engineering, it did mean...
I just want to make sure, we didn't just approve a project, we just confirmed we would like to see more.
It's a concept plan, that's all.
I need those words.
I know, that's what I mean, yeah.
And, you know...
We got to get to the definitive.
I, I'm sad that we would lose a couple of units affordable. And I think in the balance, affordable out here is a challenge, because it's so far away from resources and stuff. So I'd like to see if we can maintain the 10%, that you were like 10% before would be nice, but, you know, we'll see how that plays out going forward.
Well, the one thing that I, and again, it's, it's a pain when you're dealing with having to keep numbers even. And it's like, how do you do half of, I don't think you can do half of a building affordable, it just won't work. It, so...
Well, consider, can I make a comment?
Please do. Do you, yeah, if you don't mind, I've got to...
Considering, considering the original subdivision plans that were turned in, let's say in 2003, and approved in five and six and so forth, had no affordable.
None.
And considering the first definitive plan that was turned into us a couple of years ago, had no affordable.
Yeah.
It was only through the process of the preliminary plan that you guys offered to give us the four affordables. So we're still going from zero to two, which I think is an advantage.
I'm not going to argue that point.
Exactly, just making a comment.
I just, I just needed to make that comment, but no, I'm, wow.
I mean, it's a lot.
You don't have to go talk to the power line people now, do you?
No, and I, yeah, that gets me out of that conversation too.
Wow.
Yeah, I'm not so sure.
Depending on how the trail network falls.
Yeah.
If you're going to put a trail under there, you have to talk to them.
Well, I think the trails are there.
They like the trails.
Yeah. Yeah.
But you, you, you guys, you put this concept plan together, Dylanson Roy? So you were aware of the three units on a driveway question as well? That's the max typically?
Yes.
So you saw that somewhere?
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay.
Three buildings.
So that was going to be my question.
I had the same thought.
Three buildings, three units?
I think it's buildings.
Well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, we'll, we'll have to look into that. This'll, I mean, with this new design...
Could be a waiver if we had to, somehow.
We got work to do. Yeah, with this new design, there's definitely going to be...
A whole review.
A whole nother review that'll have to be done, so the, not that the comments are going to be obsolete, but the comments that we were going to go through tonight, I don't think it's going to help us go through tonight. I think this, I think dealing with that after they come back with a fully designed plan, being able to get that over to the peer review, get them to do an initial, you know, review of it, to get more comments.
Although if I could say, part of the motivation here was to simplify things.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
And this is the engineering that was approved before.
Mm-hmm.
So I don't, and we got the, and I'm, I'm not picking on, on the peer reviewer, but they had this plan at the beginning of May before you guys had it. And I believe that I, it should simplify, I guess I should say.
Yes.
Yeah.
So you made progress.
I want to be careful.
That's what I'm, that's what I'm saying. It'll, it's not going to be such an extensive...
That's right.
Peer review as, as this one was.
Yeah.
It's not going to be 13 pages.
Yeah. And hopefully, not five months.
No.
Exactly.
It's, I, I don't anticipate that whatsoever. It seems, that's not likely. I think, I, I think a productive next step would be, outside of this meeting, engineer and town planner to meet, just say, what's relevant in the review?
That's right.
That's still applicable.
That could be built in.
And then from that, we can get a punch list of which things are still really open and need some resolution. You've already wiped out almost two-thirds, I mean...
Yeah, I know it, yeah.
Right away. But just to see what remains as applicable, and that also reduces the amount of work on this round.
That's right.
Because we'll have already some germane engineering issues. And of course, there'll be new ones that are opened up, but they're going to be far fewer than what we confronted before.
And what I could do, I believe, because I think your next meeting is December 14th, if I recall correctly.
We have a meeting the 28th, but...
Yeah, but that's around the corner.
That's too short, so...
But I could actually submit within the next week or so, the special permit application.
Okay.
So that, that is on the table, so that we can do the hearings all together essentially.
Lovely.
Um...
Yes.
Do you require a special permit on shared driveways?
No, I believe it's part of the OSRD. It's allowed that the planning board can make that decision during the review of the OSRD.
Yeah, because sometimes do.
Yes, I know some have a common driveway special permit.
Um, part of the reason, just so that, and we can massage this, but part of the reason why we clustered the units the way we did, is it's worked well over at Hummingbird to have these little threesomes, you know? But if that's an issue, I, I'm the one that told Stan to move them like this. If that's an issue, we can move them around a little bit. But we can talk.
I, I also think that the suggestion of an HOA model approach to this kind of takes off some of the burden of difficulties with the shared driveway. Because if you're going to have a hired service for plowing for snow there, you know, for the circle, you can also make arrangements for the shared common drivers too.
And so on, as well as an HOA or a condo association, you know?
Exactly.
Because, you know, a condo association with this project without those internal lot lines could work pretty well in this kind of...
It really would.
With an OSRD, you know, it, it avoids, you know, property owner deeds and all that stuff. It's, it's a condo association, you own the house, and then the man, the association manages the land around it.
That's right.
So that's another option that I think would also be great for this.
Yeah. And that's how we've done it at Hummingbird.
Yes.
I didn't do exclusive use areas. We did, it's, you know, the units are all just, you know, part of the overall site.
Yep.
Primarily because I didn't want people fighting over half of a front lawn and stuff.
Yes, yep. Yeah, that's a good, right.
You know, and I've seen that happen.
I have too.
Yeah.
I managed condominiums professionally.
Yes, yes, you know.
Multiple times in my life, yes.
Wow. If, do my colleagues have further questions before I open it up for the public?
Yeah.
Okay, so you're going to get to, you're going to be the first, I promise you, number one. My colleague's going to go first, and we'll...
My question to Mr. Collins is that, if you get a feeling for this board tonight that this is an approach that we would like, are you basically saying you're all done with the other subdivision?
I can't say that tonight. I have to talk to my client's heirs, he has two kids. But I'd say, you know, there's a pretty good shot that this is what you're going to see. I tend to be persuasive.
And they have seen this, they're aware.
And they have seen, they're aware of it. And one of the last conversations I had with Mr. Moulton was about this. So I would say 90%.
Okay, because I'm just trying to...
That's fair.
I don't want to be playing a game of...
But I don't want to make a commitment that I'm not authorized to make, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
That's fair. You, sir, if you want to, if just say, name and address as you approach, come on up.
Keith Henderson, Two Wright Way. Earlier, Bob, you had mentioned that Stratton Hills Development is giving the town, or assisting the town with the upgrade of a pump station that is existing. Are you familiar with anything surrounding that pump station?
Yes, yeah.
Do you know what the proposed upgrade will do to that pump station in terms of size and smell?
I don't, I'm not an engineer.
So I can actually, so Matt is from, the DPW is actually...
All right, may I, may I finish?
Sure. Let the gentleman in, thank you, Danny, and then, go ahead, Mr. Henderson.
I appreciate that you want to get other people, but...
Yeah.
He was given time to complete, so that's all I'm asking for.
And that's what we're giving you, so go ahead.
So can you tell me what the amount that the town is assisting from Stratton Hills on the upgrade of that station?
I, I don't understand.
Neither do I.
What do you mean? Do you mean dollar wise?
Yes.
Actually, I think Mr. Moulton would be paying for it.
Okay. Thank you. So, what you're saying, in 2006, Stratton Hills buried a pipe from this development to tie into the sewer. It's underneath Wright Road.
That's right.
So that, at that point, they were planning to put a pump station.
That's correct.
And if there's an association, as you were mentioning earlier, for the maintenance of the subdivision, that certainly could be incorporated with a pump station into that association, so that the town would not have to maintain the pump station, the pump station would be maintained by the association that...
Well, that's true, but then...
Still has to go to the next pump station.
The town would still have to upgrade the pumps that it's upgrading.
Correct.
And they wouldn't get any money.
But, the difference is, the upgrade, that station that exists there is 100% sealed to atmosphere at the location, thus there is zero stench from any sewage. What the proposed pump station does, because it doubles the size of the pump station, I can attest to this, you can't have that much sewage for a small pump station, and to do that size pump station, they do direct pumping, which then vents to atmosphere at the location.
So if it's an issue, if I could just say, then we'll go back to our original plan.
I don't think, you can't, you can't make that decision.
No, no, but what I'm saying is...
That's a DPW...
Yeah, but I mean, if it's a major issue...
We're not going to make that decision here, no.
We could go back to our own, you know, so again...
Yes, that's, that's simply what I was asking.
You can't, you can't commit to that.
No, I, I know, and I'm not committing to anything, but that certainly is something that we will all have to discuss.
Would it make, would it make some...
The pump station's existing.
To weigh in, some thoughts on it? So I'm going to invite the town engineer to come to the table to address some of the concerns that Mr. Henderson expressed and that we've been discussing at the table.
Going to sit down or...
Yeah, please, can you pull up a chair?
Sure.
And if you could scoot over a little bit?
We can.
And can you find someone, get a chair for Mr. Henderson too, so he can have a seat with us?
We'll get a chair.
Sure, you can, you can join. We're all, we're all conversational here, go ahead. So Matt, what do you, regarding Mr. Henderson's concerns, do you have any insight that you can, for us, that can address that?
Sure. So as, as we previously, we're just talking about with the consolidation of a pump station as opposed to the town only two, just upgrading one, I think for the interests of the town, that seems like a pretty good deal, especially for a pump station that is already failing. We don't have spare parts, it's hard to find spare parts for it. Pump stations, like the Wright Way, they're routinely replaced, we see these, I forbid, all the time from other towns. So in nature, it's a great idea, and the fact that there's, there was an agreement that And the fact that there's, there was an agreement that had expired between developer and the town in terms of monies to pay for the station. I think is a good idea, but in terms of Mr. Henderson's.
Could you, well, thank you. I'm sorry to interrupt, but could you speak to concern about, I, this, this is a new argument for me. I hadn't heard before about that there would be some odor or with the, with the venting, with the larger size. Could you talk to a little bit about those concerns?
Sure.
Because it's the first time I'm hearing.
That's the first time I've heard of it, too.
Yeah, so most, um, most pump stations, they have vents. So you have a, it's called a wet well. So basically, it's just a manhole where the wastewater flows into and rises to a level and then it's pumped out. So water that's in a wet well, it can stagnate, it can allow odors to emanate from it. So that's why there's vents. And obviously, staff, DPW staff need to actually access the pump station for maintenance. So you don't have vents. All those gases can build up, create a hazard, so.
Are there other, uh, are there other facilities around town that are just as you described, where there's vented?
Absolutely.
And, and have there been complaints about odors or issues?
Only the largest stations, which is something that, um, you know, we're pretty firm with at DPW. The, the two largest pump stations we have in town, and one on Central Ave, one on Main Street, at the DPW, actually. Those are our two largest ones. Those can produce odors, noticeable odors, but all the smaller stations, um, I, I haven't heard it.
Would the proposed station be so close in size to that, to, to the largest ones that you just described? So it wouldn't even be that big?
Not even close to the scale, but it would, as Ms. Henderson said, it would, it would be a slightly larger station, but it wouldn't be something that, in my professional opinion, would create a, an odor issue for.
Matt, you were here for the meeting with attorneys, Dan from the DPW, the town manager, and a number of other people from the neighborhood.
Sure.
It was discussed that Dan gave an address for us to visit a pump station. Everybody who went to that pump station smelled sewage.
Sure.
And that was the example station of similar station. So when you say it doesn't smell, yet everybody who went there smelled sewage. And.
That's a fair comment, so I think.
Everybody I know, who I've talked to, who works in the sewage industry, and I've talked to a few recently, has said, oh, yeah, it's expected that when you have a wet well system, there is going to be odor. It might be small at points, it might be greater at other points. But when that's located in somebody's front yard, and not only in somebody's front yard, but anybody who's on Sandy Pond, if you have a fisherman in a boat, that pump station is twenty feet from the edge of the water. So any odors is going to emanate out onto the pond also.
So just to speak to that point, so, um, what Ms. Henderson was just talking about, odors. So out of an abundance of caution, we're proposing, it's called like an odor control system for the vent. So basically, all the odors will actually go through a carbon system. They'll filter out any sort of odors. That's not typical for a small station, what we're proposing. We're considering a small station. We only have two real large stations in town, as I mentioned. Uh, but that was really an abundance of caution, any sort of possibility of odors. That's why we're considering a carbon ventilation filter.
So what, I'm gonna ask one question. Maybe Mr. Disken's been waiting patiently. Is there a meaningful difference? So my, first of all, I want to clarify. One way or another, that station has to be upgraded.
Yes.
Whether Stratton Hill disappears overnight magically, that has to be done anyway, right?
Absolutely.
So the issue is, does, does the contribution of Stratton Hill of their waste to this have a meaningful impact on odor, odor control among the system, the way that you described it?
Uh, my opinion, no. Um, I don't believe so.
I think, Mr. Disken?
So, I was gonna, I was on the same track, on the same track as the chairman. Again, if Stratton Hill did not occur, the town would have to rebuild that pump station, no matter what. The pump station is failing. You said the pots are not available.
So we have.
If, if you were to replace that pump station today, are you saying that Mr. Henderson is saying that the existing pump station does not have a venting capacity to it? It does not vent at all. Is that what you're saying?
It doesn't vent locally. The venting is through the sewer system.
Okay, I thought venting went to the atmosphere.
No, there is a vent there. It's, it doesn't vent much, which I don't expect it to change based on the amount of water.
There is no venting of the sewage there. There's venting for the room below ground because that's a confined space and you need venting for confined spaces. There is no sewer venting.
For the actual wet well.
For, for the well. It's two large pots that are vented through the sewage system.
Right.
Okay, but so what you're basically saying is because of that existing condition, you don't have any odors. But you're anticipating that the new pump station, based on what you've done talking to these folks, is gonna have a venting system. It can't be duplicated because of the age of that. There's a new system. It's, it's got regulations that are associated with it, whatever the case might be.
Mm-hmm.
So we don't have any control over that design.
And.
Except for what he's proposing, which is to put a carbon filter system of some sort on it.
And the core problem, that the existing system that's on Mr. Henderson's property, it's thirty years old and those types of pump stations really aren't made anymore. Reject their stations, they're done. That's why we're having a hard time finding spare parts. So basically, the system that we're proposing is really out of necessity. Uh, basically, the wet well and then the pump system.
So if we had no meeting here tonight with no Stratton Hill, you'd simply be going out to the neighborhood and getting that pump station fixed somewhere.
Absolutely.
And this pump station that fixed, again, without Stratton Hill, would still have venting?
Yes.
The new one.
Yes, absolutely, absolutely.
Why are you shaking your head, Mr. Henderson? Why, why, what's, what's?
Let's get back up. As Matt pointed out to everybody, they want to install a carbon filtering system. He didn't mention that the station that we were told to visit had that same exact carbon filtering system. It still stunk like sewage.
So I think.
Beyond the scope. Yeah, this is beyond the scope, but the one thing I want to point out.
Yeah.
If this were not to be upgraded by, uh, due to the Stratton Hill project, it, going forward, the town would still have to upgrade it and the venting would still be there.
The venting, if you don't increase the capacity of the station.
The whole pump station has to be replaced, is the problem.
I'm aware of that. I understand that intimately, that the pump station has to be upgraded. There is not one pump station designed. If you talk to people in industry who deal with pump stations, there's more than one way to build them.
Yeah, I've installed some.
Venting, that is what's proposed, is what is a serious issue. Because then it becomes, okay, the houses that are existing, their value plummets to help Stratton Hill's values stay higher.
I don't make that connection at all. Sorry. It's got nothing to do with Stratton Hill.
Just to keep things simple, so Ms. Henderson, do you have my contact? I know we've been in contact with your attorneys, so they're obviously planning on continuing that. We're not meant to.
Yep.
You're welcome to visit DPW anytime.
Yep.
And just what the others area that Ms. Henderson brought up that they visited, that was really a question, so the residents had interest in this carbon system. So our engineer actually gave them a site where it was used. It was a very different site. It's a very large, kind of like a Main Street or Central Ave pump station, one that produces odors.
May I ask a, Mr. Chair?
Please, Chair.
I believe Mr. Henderson said as he came to the table, and, and I'm just gonna plum the depths on this one. If this was a condominium association, you would expect that they would manage their pump station. Do we have any condominium associations in area right now that manage their own stations, or are they managed by the DPW?
Uh, not that I know of.
You don't know of any condos that do it?
No.
I'm, I'm familiar with one on Sunflower Court, which is owned by the condo association, which is managed by the town. That's the only one I, I currently have any knowledge of. But, um, yeah, so it would ultimately probably come to the DPW to manage the stations, either way.
And I think just as a result, so Mr. Henderson, just try to get back to the odor issue. Maybe we could visit a more similar site in town, just to show that kind of what I believe won't be a problem. I think that'd probably make all of us feel better about this.
Yeah, okay. Sure. I'll be in contact with you.
Thank you, Mr. Henderson. Were there other, yes, Jess. I'm sorry, Frank, I assumed that your thing was resolved. Jess, if you'll excuse me.
Right, mine, mine, mine was resolved. I, I had some things to contribute to what the town engineer had said. I was gonna suggest a, a car carbon system. I've installed them in other small stage stations with similar issues. And it was, and I was also going to say that in my experience in other municipalities, DPWs tend not to like to have pumps, pumps, um, large, not large pump stations, but pump stations larger than like an E1 system. Privately owned, discharging to their, their, their sewers.
Yeah, thank you. Okay. Jess, come on up and say, you know, you know, you know, you know, you know the routine.
You should just leave a chair.
And we'll just leave a chair. Can we leave a chair?
I'll do a dance. No, this won't be long. Um, because I understand Mr. Henderson's concern. It's that the pump station on his road has to be replaced. But he's concerned that adding thirty-four houses, thirty-four units contributing to it will increase the thing. So could I just suggest, uh, that when you're talking about peer review, could that be a question that was pursued? Because, you know, whether it might make more sense to do a separate pump station for Stratton Hill, it would seem that is a relevant question to have a peer reviewer look at.
So, uh, so what is, what is the peer reviewer looking at, is the question here, because?
What could be the impact of Stratton Hill, thirty-four units, adding into what the pump station, currently serves by Mr. Henderson's, and that could.
And that's already been looked at. We've already looked at that. The town has already looked at that. And that's why we have a design for the pump station already.
Okay.
That's from the two thousand and five.
No, it's right.
But it started in two thousand and five with the approval of the original.
And I want to add that with that study, has already been sized to account for parties that live on Wright Road that, that have septic, that haven't yet linked to the sewer. So it's already been sized to accommodate all of them, whether they're, all the housing, whether they're on septic or sewer or not. That's already built in, so the Stratton Hill will not be cannibalizing from that capacity. That that capacity has already been in there?
That is correct.
Okay.
And future growth on Wright Road.
And for future growth, yes.
If, 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 Matt, can you answer this question? If Strat, I, I don't believe this is gonna happen. I don't think they're gonna be putting in a separate pump station at Stratton Hill. But for purposes of conversation, let's say Stratton Hill put in a new pump station. Wouldn't they still have to pump their sewer through the same exact pump station that we're talking about, ultimately, to get it to the town?
Uh, actually, no.
No, thank you.
So they can create a new route?
They would be separate. Um, if the, the original plan, if that pump station were installed, it would actually not go to the pump station Mr. Henderson was speaking about.
It would go to the pipe that I believe.
So that pipe that we're talking about does not end up in the Wright Road pump station or wherever he lives?
It would go to the top of the high spot on Wright Road.
Right down.
Right down, right from there.
And it does, it bypasses the one you're talking about, which picks up the residents that are lower, closer to the pond, basically.
Not only would it bypass that, so you know the history, that pump station at Wright Road flooded in nineteen ninety-seven or ninety-eight. And literally, the pond filled it up. It is built within the one hundred year flood zone.
Oh, I know exactly where it is.
Increasing the capacity from houses that are farther away to pump sewage through there. If you were to stand back, you'd say, that doesn't seem like the smartest idea, right?
But if I stand back and look.
You're gonna put sewage closer to a watershed than it need be.
Like all the septic systems that are out there that haven't been connected to the sewer? The ones that are still alive, that could be overflow as well?
Why was, that's exactly why that system was put in around the pond.
They know, you don't need to tie it.
Excuse me, please. Thank you.
So anyway, okay, so we potentially could put a, design a pump station upon Stratton Hill.
Absolutely.
Bypass that, and there'd be no contribution to the town?
None.
Okay.
And so that would be fine by us. We were gonna spend the money anyway. It would be a loss to the taxpayers.
Yeah, that's a, that's a.
Major loss.
That's a big cost, because we'd still have to do it.
If he doesn't want it, then think about it.
Yeah.
We can consider it. I'm just speaking for myself.
That's, that's fine, Ken. Um, did you want to make a comment, Jeff?
Um, nope, thank you.
Are there, are there public comments? Yes, ma'am, would you come up, name, address?
This has nothing to do with the sewer system. This is a clarification.
Yep.
What happens to the land above the, um, power lines? Reiterate what happens to that?
It becomes public land.
It becomes public land. Okay, so the town owns, owns it?
Inside of the town are fisheries and wildlife, or a combination.
Thank you, that's what I wanted.
Yeah.
I want it to be years down the road. Oh, hey, we have all this land and we can.
No, that's the meaning of open space. As an actual development, you have to create open space.
Can I ask one question?
Please, Heather.
Um, so.
Yeah, yeah, just say for the record.
Heather, Heather's a conservation agent. So obviously, we're looking at just this south of Power Lines. So it's an OSRD on everything south, so that means the fifty percent open space south of Power Lines. Or are we counting north?
No, we're counting whole thing.
Okay. But everything you're showing without development, that's open space as well?
Yes.
That's, that's the clarification I wanted?
Yeah.
And the blue line you have there is what's existing wetland line?
That's actually the shoreline.
That's a shoreline line, right? Yeah, for, um, for clarity on, on this plan, we didn't show the buffers.
Yeah.
I just wanted to know, because I know it was close coming to conservation when you were looking at the original plan, that you had a filing, so I just wanted to clarify what that line.
Yeah, that's the shoreline itself.
Because we're gonna be looking at, we're doing open space and everything, where a trail access is gonna be most likely in this area.
Yeah.
So I just want to verify what side we might be looking at doing that?
Yeah, and that's the only open issue. I'm glad you bring it up, Heather, because obviously, the parking lot near the trail on the other side of the Power Lines, that no longer works. So we'd have to think of a place down here, if you wanted a parking area, and then figure out a way to connect the trail, you know, to a trail network, this existing network. But that's something we can work on. Yeah, it's very doable.
Okay, good.
Tom's run the AT&T Usman's through.
Yeah, no, that's right.
The chair wants to, I see, sir, but there was a hand up in the back, ma'am. If you would name an address and come on up and.
Yes.
Kathy, down Wright Road.
She has to come up.
Could you come up?
Kathy, come on up. We'll get you a chair.
Just leave the chair here.
Just leave the chair there.
Yeah, let's just leave it.
We're gonna leave it here. You can join me.
Oh, but sit down, Kathy.
I just, I live on Wright Road and I just still am concerned about the traffic on Wright Road. Because all of this traffic is gonna be funneled down Wright Road and Snake Hill Road. There's nowhere that you can improve the road. You've got houses that are almost on the road. You've got ledge. You've got water on Snake Hill Road. We had some neighbors last spring, lost their house to a major fire. Wright Road was closed for three hours while all of the fire departments fought that fight. God forbid anything happen again, but, you know, you can't predict that. But I think that needs to be a consideration.
Okay, so I, I, I want to clarify something. The traffic issue's closed now. That's been resolved with the preliminary plan. We've had two independent traffic studies. They've both concluded that the impact is insufficient to legally stop this project?
I'm just saying it's a safety issue.
And that safety issue, again, the safety issue has been reviewed regarding traffic. And we will not open, we, we are not gonna open up traffic on this study.
Okay, a couple of clicks on a pole for a couple of hours is not gonna depict what goes on there. I'm just saying, we live there. Whoever put the clicks on the pole, they don't live there.
I understood.
That's all I have to say.
The traffic count, the counter.
May I just add to your statement?
Yes, please, Julie. And then there's a gentleman who wants to speak.
Traffic was counted and studied, but we also had responses from emergency services, from fire departments and police weighing on that traffic conversation. So it wasn't single-handedly there.
Yes, thank you. If you would come up?
No, I'm not coming up.
You need to come up so that you can, they can hear you.
Yeah.
I have a simple question. The project in Groton that you're, it's similar to this. Are there two means of egress to that project, or is it a dead end as this one is?
Um, there's both, because there's, that project, yeah.
Is there another road into the project that people can?
Project is much more, um, complicated than this one. So there are elements that have a single access and elements that have a double access. So there's both.
There's both.
Yeah.
This is only a single means of egress, though.
That's correct, yeah. Double barrel.
Single means of egress.
Yeah, but again, we could put a second one in, but I don't know that it does anything for the project and I think it's a negative for the neighborhood.
So my concern is if something happens, people can't get out of there, though. There's no place to go.
Well, actually.
Where would they go?
We actually had proposed that there could be an emergency-only, um, access.
And to Wright Road is the same thing. I just, I just want to clarify, the fire department does review these things. We can't, there's no approval. It can possibly happen without public safety weighing in about these very issues. And, 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 and we couldn't have arrived and understand, even with the, with the preliminary, without the input of public safety, who addressed the same concerns that you raised. And they are the ultimate, the authority that we, we acknowledge on this. And they're, they understand the single access and they're content with it.
Not, not as a debate, but if we look at what happened in Hawaii a few months ago, same thing. And they had, I'm sure, excellent plans and a fire department that far exceeds the capability of the town of Air. And there were hundreds of people that died.
Sir.
I'm just saying.
I think that's a, please.
Something that you should consider when you're doing any project.
If we didn't build this project, as, best to my knowledge, the end of, the end of Wright Road is a dead end and has a cul-de-sac on it. Aren't we talking about exactly the same thing?
You're adding thirty-four more units.
We're still, if we did nothing, it would still be the same thing. You have the longest, one of the longest dead ends in the town of Air, existing there right now.
But you're adding to the problem.
Yes.
So did all the people who just built single-family homes out there?
Absolutely.
Okay, so.
Okay, thank you. All right. Hearing no further comment, I think what I'd like to hear is just wrap up what we are, when we're gonna meet next, making sure that we have sufficient time built in for approval.
Yeah.
And just think about next steps, like what, what, what happens next?
And while Danny's thinking about that, I'm curious, because, um, we're in an odd spot. We're in the preliminary. I remember years ago when I said to Attorney Collins, said, we're talking thirty-six units, thirty-nine units, thirty-four units.
Thirty-four.
So, um, we need to keep this hearing open, even though, even though, I'm just, I'm just saying out loud, we need to keep this hearing open, even though we're now having a different discussion.
Correct.
That's all I want to say.
Yes, we're gonna leave this open, because I don't, I'm going to review this, but I don't think we will need to do a new application for this.
Yeah, I would amend the submission.
Correct.
Yeah. I'm just talking about the, not logistics, um, the, how we have to do it.
But I would have to file a special.
Yes.
I didn't raise my hand.
So our next meeting is December twelfth, or well, we have the twenty-eighth, but that's short.
Way too soon.
Then we have December twelfth, um, and then.
And then the next meeting, we're not meeting on December twenty-sixth, which is the day after Christmas. Believe it or not. So, um, looking at the date, because this one only goes to twenty-twenty-three, let me just pull this up really quickly.
I don't know that I can get it in.
So our next meeting in, would be January ninth.
So...
January ninth, after December, I mean.
Correct. After, after December. Our first meeting is twenty-twenty-four, it's the ninth of January. Would be December, so you could either do the December twelfth meeting, which I don't know how much time it, to get it in by then, and then the next one would be January ninth.
Dangerous occupation.
Yes.
Speaking, as far as the engineering goes, I don't know that we would be able to have a complete design for December twelfth. We could have, we could have an incremental thing to present, but that's, that, I'm hesitant to do that.
Yeah, for good reason.
Why don't we go with the January, um, date?
I don't know, but you would. Yeah, we shut down next week for Thanksgiving.
Yeah, I know. And you know, it's funny, you get to this time of year and nothing now happens till the end of the year, it's amazing. But I'll get you a letter, you've got a, an extension to twelve-thirty-one.
Yes.
So I'll get you one through January thirtieth.
Yep. Would we be submitting the special permit for, for the duplex?
And I'll submit the special permit as well.
And have that in, would we wanna, would we wanna have something for that on the December twelfth?
No, I think you could do it the same.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I don't, I think that might be a little bit out of order, is what I'm thinking, because we need to at least know that the plan is gonna be...
Yeah, but what I, what I was thinking, Ken, is I'd get it in so that if somebody had a question, "What are these gonna look like?", you're not violating the open meeting law by discussing it.
All right, well, I'll let Danny call.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I think what we'll do is, we'll, we'll talk off-line. I, I'm gonna, I have to do some reviewing of the bylaw, just to figure out the proper procedure for this.
Yeah, but I think you could do it in tandem.
I agree. I think we will be able to make the submission for the special permit and, and then also the revised plan.
Yeah.
And then have it on the same, but we would just open the public hearing on the special permit, do the legal notice and the public notice for that, and have it open for the January ninth.
Ninth, yeah.
One more comment, please, sir. So, the only other comment I'd make is the waivers. If you wanna look at the list of waivers and highlight the waivers that are gonna be... Because we usually talk about the waivers in a roundtable on a preliminary way.
And...
So we need to be careful that we get the right list of waivers.
Yeah. And I'm gonna ask, and I don't know where this falls out, but the three units, the triplex. Yes, that, I'm gonna look. We gotta figure that out. Yeah. We know there's two on a driveway, but is it buildings, dwellings, whatever? Yes. Yep, that's one of my... That's been a bugaboo in our language for a while.
Exactly.
And I had a thought that...
Yeah, me too, and I'm losing it.
That I lost, that Ken made me think of, that I thought I should ask this question. Now, what the heck was it? Isn't that awful? It was right at the...
On waivers? Oh, the waivers list, that's right.
Oh, yes, thank you, thank you. The one thing that I found very confusing, the numbers in the peer review didn't correspond with the numbers of the subregs that are posted online that I've been consulting. I was very, I was very confused.
I, I thought we cleared that up, Bob, but, but I can, I can work that out with, with Danny in our, when, when we...
Because that's the only reason why you didn't have a letter, was, I was completely, I couldn't make heads or tails. So, yeah, if you guys could resolve that, then get me the information, that would be just great.
We've been having some issues with the E-code and...
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll, we'll discuss that.
Yeah, it's always a dangerous thing to renumber things. And then you have these ghosts of the prior numbers that haunt you. But I, yeah, I, that was problematic, so, yeah. And then I can get you the list of waivers.
And also, the submission for the stormwater management permit.
Yes.
Yes. And do you have a form for the special permit?
Yes, we do have a, a form on, for a special permit. I'm just gonna have to look at that one, because I typically, two-family is a ZBA, but under the OSRD, it's allowed for the planning board to deal with that, so I just gotta have to look at the form to see what, how we have it on there.
And if that's something, Bob, I can coordinate with Danny.
Yeah. And then if you could get the forms to Frank...
Yes.
Then he can get them to me in a way that I can download.
If you can actually print them and use them, yes.
Yeah. Been fighting with computers and printers. So, thank you.
Yes.
Can you, excuse me, Jeff, Mr. Danny, can you, there might be a provision that the clearing, I think it's nine-point-six, and the duplexes require a site plan as well, which you can just call out one of the other drawings as a site plan, I believe. But the application may include an application for a site plan as well.
Yes, nine point...
Just check the types of applications. I think the language is in the OSRD, too, that it's a site plan as well.
Yes.
We changed the clearing language last time we did the bylaw. We talked, we discussed it, but I don't think we were gonna...
We decided we're gonna use it.
It's nine-point-six, and so the submission, yeah, there is, if you look at section C of it, there's, there's a list of all the submission requirement, and it does say a site plan submission.
Okay.
Okay, good.
All right, sounds good.
Thank you, Bob. I think we need a motion to continue.
Move to continue. The public hearings for Off-Right Road, Stratton Hill, map six, parcels one, two, three, seven, eight, eleven, three, fifty-five, until...
January ninth.
Of twenty-twenty-four.
As long as it's not snowing.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, it's unanimous.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Bob, thank you, Frank. Pleasure meeting you.
Sorry again for your loss.
Oh, thank you.
We're gonna take a five-minute recess. And we'll be back online at, um, seven-thirty-six. We are reconvening. Our eleven-fourteen-twenty-three air planning board meeting, and we did already have a vote to continue for, for Stratton Hill. Now we need a vote for forty-two Park Street.
It's, they're not, they're not here, something.
Exactly, I was just gonna say forty-two Park Street, the applicant is not here and has requested a continuance to our next, I mean, that would be the, the December twelfth, correct?
November twenty-eighth.
Oh, November twenty-eighth, oh, they're requesting the eleven, twenty, um, may I have a motion for the continu...
Move to continue, forty-two Park Street, map twenty-six, parcel seventeen, to November...
Twenty-eighth.
Twenty-eighth, planning board meeting.
Great, do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, we're good. And, uh, thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Matt.
Thank you, Matt. Fee schedule, so, um, Danny...
Yes.
Has constructed for us a, a, a proposed revised fee schedule, and he's actually printed out a clean copy of the current fee schedule, and then a, well, a mod, a blue line. Oh, we have a public hearing for this? Oh, I'm so sorry. I am so sorry. This is a public hearing, so I need a motion to, uh, I didn't...
Thank you, officer.
So we need a, a motion? So have we opened it for the fee schedule discussion, or is this a continuing?
This is, no, this is a formal public hearing for, that was set for today.
Oh, okay, I'm so sorry, I didn't recognize.
Advertise it, will you, by chance? I, I don't have it with me, but I can... It's okay.
No, we don't read it, we just know...
Yeah, it was advertised, legal notice.
So I do need a motion to open.
These advertisements, like in the towns and paper or something?
I don't know, I... Move to open a hearing for the fee schedule, amended fee schedule. I'm gonna read the rest of this, just because it's helpful. The planning board will review and revise the planning board fee schedule as allowed by section fourteen-point-ten of the Air Planning Board Rules and Regulations.
Do I have a second?
Seconded.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Yes.
Chair votes aye, it's open. So we have this fee schedule in front of us, and, um, we've discussed this over the previous two meetings, I believe.
Yes.
And so, uh, here it is in black and white, and, um, any comments, any discussion?
I'm so tempted to say move to accept the...
I just wanna file before you make the motion, if anyone, if there's anything here that anyone objects to, or would like to modify, or you feel good, I, I personally, I feel good about this, this looks reasonable to me.
I feel we've discussed it thoroughly, and it looks good to go.
My only comment is, the long time coming.
Great. Ken, Nathan?
I'm fine.
I'm fine. We have a motion then to, what do we call it, to accept, to endorse, to approve?
To adopt the fee schedule. Move to adopt the air planning board fee schedule presented to the planning board on November fourteenth, twenty-twenty-three.
Do I have a second?
Seconded.
Any discussion? Hearing none? Yep, there is discussion, good.
Always discussion.
Good.
This is strictly an interior, a, a system that's just for the planning board. We don't have to notify anybody else, like town, the administration or anything along those lines, or do we?
Uh, you mean, like the town manager?
Yeah.
So I, I have already had a conversation, and they know this was, uh, being...
They know that we're talking about it.
Yes, yep. And, and the town clerk also knows as well. And so this'll, this'll, once this gets approved, it'll be sent out to everyone who needs to have it.
And then we'll post it on the...
On the website, yep, it'll be updated on the website.
Then I'll put that with all the, the regulations that, uh...
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, it's approved, thank you for your work, Danny.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Motion to close.
Oh, we need to actually...
Move to close. I put it away, hold on. The fee schedule amendment hearing?
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Yes.
Chair votes aye. Thank you, everybody. Project status updates, what we all look forward to.
Yes. So, uh, right now for project status updates, the only thing is, uh, Shaker Mill Pond. So we've been working with the applicant or the developer on the project. We're working through a list of some open items that they have to do. They're still dealing with some issues on the CR, which is a, um, they're trying to get the reviewer from EOA to actually review it and get comments out to us, um, but they're not having any luck on that right now. I guess the, oh, the person who was in charge of the CR review, which was Denise Galvoa, she is on maternity leave, and there's a new person who's taken over, so they're trying to get that all, um, ironed out, uh, right now. Um, and, and they know that this has to be addressed prior to the street, uh, the street acceptance and any of the closure of the project. But, um, they have a, a list of all my open comments. We are expecting an as-built soon, uh, so that we can get that over to GPW, so they can review and get any final comments as well. And I know Heather's also provided them with, uh, some comments on the CR, and, um, so...
If anyone wants to go out, the, um, the trail has been, just gonna mark that trail on there, and it is, did it open space, um, it's between the large rock and the duplex, there is a gravel trail that goes there. It's a beautiful piece of property. It doesn't take long to walk, but it's really pretty to sit by, and it is technically open space, if anybody wants to go out and look at it.
I definitely do.
And the neighbors are really nice back there. I ride my bike in there all the time and chit-chat with the people hanging out.
Okay.
And I, and I did ask your side to put a, a sign that says "Trailhead", so you, it is visible from the, from the subdivision.
Fantastic, cool. That's great news. Oh, good, thank you. Is it okay if, if, after project status updates, if, just so we don't forget, we can do the Devon's resolution committee? Yeah, so the Devon's revolution, uh, resolution...
Actually, I have a couple of questions on some projects.
Did we finish project? Oh, oh, of course, Jeff, I'm so sorry.
I think Nathan has a couple of things to...
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, I, I...
Doesn't need to be answered tonight, but I'm wondering where Nisoya is.
Oh, good question. Where Nisoya is on their project?
Yeah, it can be a project update for another time, but they seem to drop off the radar.
Yes, I have not, um, heard anything from them, but I will follow up and see where they are, if they're starting, when, when they're anticipating on starting.
I had similarly, two, two questions I've had. Yesterday, I was out on the natural rail trail, and I noticed that the, um, silk fencing is being removed from behind Air Solar Two, so I'm curious what the status of that is. And, uh, maybe in a future meeting, where we stand with that. And secondly...
She can actually give you an update, right?
And secondly, the Groton Shirley Road, um, the, uh...
Groton, what was that?
On the Groton, okay. Groton Shirley Road.
Groton Shirley.
I mean, the road around, the propane plant? Had a question about the landscape.
Oh, Fitchburg Road, ninety-nine Fitch, or ninety-seven?
Oh, it's actually, it's actually addresses ninety-nine Fitchburg Road, yes, but remember that convert?
Yes, I remember. You're talking about Hafners?
Yes, Hafners. Okay, yes. So, I would like to check to make sure that the landscaping was installed per the landscaping plans.
Yes, and it was, uh, so I did...
So the, the arroba vadi is inside the fence, as opposed to being outside the fence, on the street side of the fence, they are currently installed on the pump side of the
They are currently installed on the pump side of the fence. And I, my recollection was they were going to be installed between the stormwater swale and the fence on the street side.
I'll double check that, but I believe when we met out there and we were talking, DPW and Fire and when we did with Charlie as well, the landscaping was supposed to be on the inside of the fence, but I would just be curious.
It may, it may have, it may have, over the time of the plans and the changes made on the property, it may have been moved. Just my memory is one way and I don't have a copy of the plans. So I wanted to ask about that. Thank you.
It's a good one.
It is a good one.
It's, was brought to my attention by a person on the road. And I agreed with them.
Would you like an update on A or Solar?
I'd love it if you want to, yeah.
Yeah, thanks, come on up, happy.
You don't have to leave.
So for A or Solar Two, back in, I think September, maybe into September, beginning of November, they came before the commission prior, just after getting their amended order to request that the silk fence be removed, basically because it's, the vegetation was six feet tall.
Yeah, it's deteriorating.
It's deteriorating. So because of the paving work had not been done at that time that they approved it, or the request and the retaining wall not receiving a sign up on the building commissioner at this time yet, that silk fence is staying. So the silk fence from, on the, going down the road on the left side, from Washington Street to the second replication area was going to remain in place until also the vegetation has to go through two cycles for the, for that. Everything else was allowed to be removed, basically because it is stable for the most part. With the condition that they had to leave some of, they were going to take out as many hay bales as they possibly could to not scatter too much. It would be inspected one time, one week afterwards. And I wanted to go back out in the spring just to verify nothing had shifted through the, whatever crazy winter seasons that we have. Other than that, it's been done. I did notify Danny and Charlie, the building commissioner, that they might be coming to you guys for other things, because there are still outstanding items on site that would need to be looked at to not finish closing it out.
Yeah.
They did go for an extension on our order for conservation till next year for those vegetation areas. But we did allow them to remove the silk fence because they really weren't doing anything anymore.
And my comment would be, I appreciate the silk fencing and the plastic was being, the, it was plastic silk fencing and hay bales. I just appreciate the fact that they went in and took it out.
And snow fencing.
Because that's detritus eventually in the snow fencing and stuff. So, but I was just honestly surprised that, to see three or four crews out there.
Yeah, because significantly it's not closed, so they really shouldn't.
Because it's not done. And I know, I know it's not closed out from our side either. So I just asking, thanks.
And I did mention it to Danny that they would be coming probably looking for that because there are still some outstanding items that would need to be.
And I know the applicant's often done what they wanted to do, not what they were told to do.
And they didn't know what to do with it, because again, I've been waiting for almost three weeks for this to come out and I'm surprised that they went now because I'm sure some of those were frozen to the ground.
That's what I was wondering.
Actually.
Because they asked to remove them before they did so. And there's been a couple hard frosts since then, so.
Right.
And it is fairly wet.
It looked good. I mean, I'm a layman and I was watching them for a while, but they looked really decent.
I'll note them are.
All right, thank you.
Here, well, thank you.
Thank you, Heather.
Any other outstanding projects?
You, did you have a?
The Nissoya one.
Oh, that, oh, yeah, yeah, that's right.
Yeah. On that particularly, did it expire? Do we, do, it certainly didn't get constructive approval.
Who's that?
Nissoya.
Nissoya? You guys approved it on July 11th, I believe.
Oh, it's approved. Oh, right, 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 right. Never mind. So it's, it's, it's just up to them when they want to start?
Yes, yeah, yeah. They just have to start within two years of having it.
Okay.
But I, so I believe they are, I had someone reach out to me maybe about two weeks ago. They're looking to not do some of the upgrades yet. They're going to be doing some of the building expansion, but there's some portions that they're not going to do yet. They're going to phase it out. So they, they're putting together an application and they may come back to us. But I told them, first get it together, get it to me so I can look at it and see what, if it actually needs a modification. I don't think it will, depending on, you know, if it's just being phased and they're going to be doing it in certain portions. But I won't know until I see the plans. Thank you.
Great. We're good, the public hearing, I mean, updates?
Move to a point?
Yeah, so let's.
Julie Murray as the second victim. Air Devon's resolution committee?
I'll second that.
I still don't like ones through the planning board, but I'll, I'm very happy to do it.
Do you want to make a friendly amendment?
I would like to be on it, but not as a planning board. So if, for some reason I need to step back, I don't want it to have to be a second person on this board. I think it's abuse of the planning board through the town hall.
I don't think we.
So I'm gonna, I guess, did we make a second?
I did.
We're in the discussion phase.
I agree with you.
I, I agree with you. In general, the level of volunteerism in this town is not as high as it needs to be. So what happens is when there's important committees and commissions and things, they always pick one from column A, the select board, one from column B, the planning board, one from column C.
But I'm going to be happy to serve, so we'll.
So exactly. And as the volunteerism comes up and I'm, I'm seeing a wave of volunteers coming forward, hopefully this will change, yeah? We'll, it's, it's not for us, it's planning board. It's right on the time.
Yeah, yep.
But I agree with you. I'm way too busy.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
I'll vote aye too.
For myself, yes.
You can.
Yeah, you can vote yourself.
You can, I miss.
That was five ayes, right?
Thank you.
Great, thank you, welcome. We have two other items on the administrative matters. I kind of want to do a smaller one first.
Okay.
Would that be MBTA zoning or the discussion of multiple, which is the smaller of these two discussions?
Two sides of the same.
Are they both really elaborate?
I mean, neither are very elaborate, I would say. Why don't we take the MBTA zoning?
So let's, yeah, let's just clear that. So tell, just share with everyone, would you share it with me and do it and tell me, but tell us.
Okay, so when I joined, I was under the impression that the MBTA zoning was all set. And so it wasn't up until recently when I was asked to speak at a CPC meeting for, regarding the MBTA zoning. I reached out to Alan and asked him to speak on it just because I did not have the history on it. And so what I did was, I wanted to meet with Alan just to get the history of it. And he told me that there was a letter that we received saying that we are in compliance. I did a little bit more research on it and it was a letter that we received on March 31st of 2023 that said we were in interim compliance. And all interim compliance is, is basically that the action plan that was submitted to, for the MBTA zoning complies with what was required. And so you, there's still the application for full compliance that needs to be done. So we're not really completed yet. I also happened to be on an MBTA zoning webinar last week that the EOHC, CHL.
Executive Office of Housing and Community Development.
There you go. Thank you. EOHC L is, was going through the application and all.
Living, is that what they call it now?
Yeah.
Used to be.
Yeah. It was DHCD, used to be.
Used to be DHCD, now it's.
Okay.
So on that, during the webinar, they actually, when they were going through the application, there was a section that got to, where they talked about inclusionary housing. And that if there is an inclusionary housing component to the MBTA zoning, that if the requirement is more than 10% at 80% AMI, an economic feasibility study is required. Our inclusionary zoning is 20% at 80% AMI. So this was something new that, that I didn't know about. So I actually met with, with Robert and Carly today about this. I reached out to Karen Chapman from MRPC to see if she had dealt with this and knows what they're looking for, for this project, for the, this kind of study. So I'm waiting to hear back from MRPC. Robert and Carly are on board and they know that this is something that's out there that may need to be, that, at this point that I see is required to be done. So we'll need to get this done prior to the December of 2024, before it becomes, you know, enacted with the bylaw. So we still have some, some work to get done over here.
So I'm gonna, I think I heard what you said, but I need to ask a question about it.
Okay.
The requirement is that 10% of, go through the 10, 80, 20, 80.
Yes.
Because I think I heard you backwards and I want to make sure I heard you.
No, you heard him right and I'm confused too, but go ahead, play it out.
So there is a trigger in their, in their application that says if the requirement is more than 10% at 80% AMI.
The require, what, which requirement?
For inclusionary housing.
One in 10.
If it's one, if it's more than that 10%,
Yes.
then you have to do an economic feasibility study.
And we require two in 10.
20%, yes, one in five.
So the thing.
So, excuse me.
No, go ahead.
I'm going to ask the dumb question because I spend so much time with this, as you know. Go for it. Because we have, we are actually saying we want more affordable housing, we have to do an economic plan?
Yep. That's what I'm confused about.
And that's something better. Your confusion is the same confusion I have.
That's the confusion I have.
We all are confused. So, and is this why you reached out to Karen?
Yes.
Okay, have you, have you and Karen had a conversation about this?
I have not yet, I have not heard back from her.
I'm, I'm not going to cast dispersions on anybody. I think there is a mistaken understanding on one or the other side of the fence on this.
And I thought, I thought the same thing, but during the webinar, someone asked the que, the exact question you're asking and said, wait, what is the actual trigger? And she said, if it's more than 10% at 80% AMI, then you're, you have to do an economic.
So I wondered if, I'm sorry, but let me.
No, no, no.
So I wondered if they're asking for, I wonder, I wonder if the question's not being fully asked, which is 80%, 60%, 30% AMI. In other words, if you have more than one unit, two units, one of the units has to qualify at a lower AMI number like 60 or 30. I don't know, this is supposition.
That's a good question.
This is supposition.
That's why we have Danny.
Yeah, this is complicated. But, and I will also tell you right now that when we did the initial work on this, there was no discussion of inclusionary and AMI.
That's right.
This is, so what happened is for the population.
It's, it's been changing over.
Well, that's it, yeah. This has been, this has been a, a highly organic situation.
Yes.
And I think, I'll stop talking now, but that, that's what surprises me. So being, being open to having more affordable housing is creating more work for us.
Right. And that's, that's exactly what puzzled me is that, wait a minute, we're given an extra step even though we're exceeding.
You're laughing and smiling, yeah.
I, I'm baffled as well.
So we lead the way.
Nathan, sorry, go ahead.
In my opinion, we comply with the spirit of the law. I really don't want to see Danny burdened with more work. If this is another, if there's significant effort, will the MRPC pick up?
That's another thing that I'm, I'm going to talk to Karen about if there's, you know, something we can get, money's to get, to help on this.
Yes, definitely.
I'm going to give you, we, every single town has DLTA grants already granted to us. I'm going to imagine that we're not, we're not going to be the only town. Fitchburg is probably in the same spot. So guessing they'll do the work.
And, and just so that you, everyone knows, you know, on this webinar, most of the towns that were on there, there was about 50 and some, 50 or something towns in there, no one is even as close as we are.
Exactly.
Everyone is still in the outreach, you know, process of community, you know, values and all, figuring out what the community wants and reaching out. They haven't even started looking at this, so we're much further along than most.
We're the scouts with the, getting shot at, even though we're doing the right thing.
I just want to protect your time.
It's one of the craziest things I ever heard.
Me too.
It would be exactly the opposite.
Me too.
So exactly the opposite. More affordable, close to the train.
I won't jump on it in the morning, but keep me in the loop.
Yeah, no, I'll keep, I'll keep you in the loop. I just.
Danny's reached out to Karen and I'll reach out to Glenn and we'll figure out what's going on.
I was really confused when I heard that on the webinar. I was like, whoa.
Because in the beginning, it was, it was not well understood by anybody.
Yeah.
And we kind of helped right the way, get us there. So I, let me be as, as a member of the executive board of the MRPC.
Yep.
If I can help get you there, I'm going to happen to do it. It's got to be some administrative snafu somewhere.
So as the introduction to the next item in management matters, which is this discussion among a larger land use working group, multifamily uses, accessory dwelling units, 750 square foot minimum requirement, and there may be others that are part of it. I just want to remind us, remember at the very beginning of the year, I asked everyone to come up with things that they would like to do, an accomplishment by the end of the year. So I thought at this moment, this is one of them. In fact, this is probably the most important one. So I just want to assure you that, look, we're working on it, so that's good. The other two that I remember were trails. We had four easy trail things and we, Ken and I need to regroup with Dan Van Skolwijk to give you an update on that and we will do that. And then finally, Julie and I had worked on, you know, the master plan midterm review. And the only thing we fell short there is that we never had a big public meeting of the results, but we did have an internal town hall meeting. And frankly, I think that's just fission. Julie, if you disagree, we can revisit that, but I think we did the task and it was useful and helpful and will definitely guide us to the next one. So that's just a long preamble to say that the work we did at the beginning of the year is paying fruit now. And this is one of them. And who wants, who's going to take the lead on discussion? Would you do this or Ken do it?
I'll let Ken, since he was actually in the room.
Yeah, Ken, you want to take us through?
I was on Zoom and trying to, I couldn't see anybody, so it's a little hard to really figure out what was going on, but I, I'll let either one of you.
You were the star of the meeting.
I mean, I can talk about the 750 and, you know, kind of briefly what we did, but here, I'll just, so the first one, the 750 is what we were discussing briefly.
Minimum square foot for living unit.
Yes, and actually Charlie came to this meeting. We talked about what my proposal would be is to remove the 750 minimum requirement out of the bylaw. And all that we would do would be reference the building code instead, the state building code instead. That way, there is no minimum requirement per se like we have now, because I don't think it's, I don't think that's legal as it, you know, as we have it today. My interpretation of that 750 minimum requirement is more of it, it's a type of exclusion zoning and that's no longer allowed. It's been around since 1972, so it's something that's been here for quite a long time. So it's, I think it's definitely something that needs to be removed and just reference the building code on that.
Okay, that's, I personally, I agree that it has to be removed. I'm just not sure that I agree with Danny's interpretation of the building code because Charlie had a little objection to that. Turns out the building code, the rooms can be extremely tiny. So I was hoping that we would all think about it being referenced to either the 40B regulations or some other set of regulations, which actually has a number in it.
So the only, the only problem on that is those are guidelines.
Whatever.
So I, and the reason I want to reference the state building code is because it is, it's, it's, it's a, yes, exactly. And I understand that Charlie feels that, you know, oh, well, you could build a room this small and. We all know in practicality, you're not going to do that because you're not going to sell it. No one's going to want to live in that. And it's just not something that is, is selling in, in this market at all.
So I'm going to, I'm an advocate for not having a minimum number of square feet. I have also been on the other side of this situation, managed a property in Westford that was purchased as a single family home and a condominium. And then the rooms were subdivided and bunk beds were brought in. And there was, there were 21 people living in this building. Because Massachusetts does not require a closet for a bedroom, doesn't require a certain, there's a certain minimum number of square feet required for certain things in the Mass, and it may be the health code. What, if, I mean, let me go through the story, okay? The end of the story was they had a wastewater treatment plant. And their wastewater treatment plant license didn't allow that many people in a building. So that's how I solved the problem. So whether it's buildable or not, you, you end up in situations where you do get that. Not going to say, not going anywhere with that. Health code. Are there places you're going to find minimum square footage for portions of dwellings? Bedrooms and stuff like that is health code. So.
CMR seven.
Yeah, whatever it is. So I would, to your point of having, having a footed, having, having a number somewhere in a code, I agree. And that's why I say reference the building code, which is CMR seven.
That's what it says in Westford.
And, and. And if you don't mind, our sanitarian might want to actually weigh in on this.
Yeah, that'd be a good one.
Bridgette, Bridgette Braly might want to just be involved in this because ultimately we got Bob Ozik, Fire Bob, Charlie and Bridget, who live on the front lines of this all the time. We're giving you a, how, how it is to build it, but the impact on what's currently here and what they have to do could be thorny. So that's all I'm saying.
And I just want to let you guys know, no other town actually has a requirement like that.
So I would, I agree with what he says, but I'm, so what I'm trying to, I've asked this question before and I don't know if Dan can do it for me or not. We hired a consultant, Judy Barrett. I've said this maybe a half a dozen times, but nobody seems to listen to me or care. We hired a consultant, we paid, we paid and we, this was before, I think I might have been the only one on the planning board, no, Jeff was before me. Judy Barrett, who does consulting all over the state on zoning bylaws and these kinds of regulations. Why can't we ask Judy Barrett what she thinks, how the 750 stayed in there when she did her review? Number one, if it was illegal.
You're talking about in 2018.
Right. And then secondarily, is there a number that makes everyone comfortable or is this the way to go with the building code? We need to get a recommendation, is what I'm getting at.
And if you want to. And if you wanna.
Why did she leave it in?
I've worked with her before.
Just call her up and see if we can have a conversation.
I'll talk to her. I really honestly think it was just something that was a carryover and not, it just may have been missed. Cause you look at, in all of the towns that I have worked in, I have never seen a minimum requirement except for building codes. That's, and that's always what's been.
But I'll make one more statement. We used to be a town that served a large military establishment. And we had issues with crowding and stuff. So it may have come from that.
And that's where, that's where it did come from. It was, it was in 1972, when you look at the original real zoning map, that's, you see the reference of minimum. Minimum sizes for a dwelling unit is 750. And that's where you first see it, because that's where zoning was first adopted here. And it's been carried over since. That is a form of exclusion, so exclusion zoning. And so that's, we can no longer have that.
So we all agree, we're gonna try to get rid of it. It's just a procedure of how we.
Yes, yes. So I will definitely talk with Bridget, Charlie, and to Fire Department about this. And, and, you know, this is not something that's gonna happen right away. So it's, I'm hoping to get some input. We're gonna be meeting again at, when did we say it was November?
It's like 28th, 30th.
The 30th, yes. So we'll be meeting again on that to discuss it. And I'm hoping to get some, some input before then.
Just, I wanted to clarify one thing before, at the beginning in general of this discussion. These items that we're talking about, as you prefaced, you said, you know, they were goals for the year and whatnot. But remember, this was a sub-working group made up of members of the planning board, members of the, it was driven by the Affordable Housing Committee.
Yes, indeed.
As much as by the planning board.
Correct.
Affordable Housing Committee in an attempt to make more units available as asked. We started out thinking that way. So that's, it's, it's got members of the Affordable Housing Committee on it and work in a working group.
And, yes, Nathan. Just preface also that what Danny and Ken are sharing is these are preliminary. We have not made a recommendation from that.
No, not yet.
Correct. Yes. And, and so anything that comes out of this working group will need to go to these board, to the board. For review. And that way, the board will be the one who.
Hearing us.
Yeah, there'll be hearings, because they're gonna be, the board will be the one who sponsors that.
Yeah. And if I may, Mr. Chair, I wanna ask one question. We specifically talk about A1 and A2 as to our zoning, okay? Someone's gonna ask, I'm gonna ask it now. Why not across all residential zoning?
What's that now?
We have other residential zones besides A1 and A2, don't we in town?
Right, but what's your question?
Yeah, why, discussion multifamily uses in the A1 and A2 zones.
Well, because we don't allow them. That's why they're not allowed.
They're not allowed in A1 and A2. Yes. So if we change the language to allow them in all zones.
Well, let's finish the 750. Are we done with the 750?
Yeah, I think we're good on the 750.
Okay, cause that's not related to the 750, right?
I'm sorry, yes, I had moved on to the 750. It's in the same sentence in front of me.
Yeah, just because these are all the topics.
That's an excellent question about, is it limited to just A1, A2? We're thinking about increasing. Is it potential density or liberty with what's allowable? So your question is, why not all residential areas? And then the answer is because it actually is permissible except in A1, A2, right?
So the long and the short of it, let me, can I do this one?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So I can do this one.
I appreciate this.
The reason this, I'm driving this one a lot, okay? And I have been for a long time. What ended up happening here is under the OSRD regulations, there's language, which I read before and it's, I can get it right behind me if you want. But the language basically says that an OSRD allows all building types, meaning a single family, a two-family, and a multifamily. Except, it has to be in that table to be allowed. So basically, the underlying table is the one that really rules. It's a strange situation. So in the case of the two-family, there's a little other piece of language in there that says that we can do something with the two-family in an OSRD. And if it's not in an OSRD, it's just a lot out there, an A and R, something like that. We can't do anything because it's an N. So the idea was to regulate, because we're trying to get the Affordable Housing Committee type thinking, is we're trying to get more units on the market.
More density.
More density.
Exactly.
Which might then may provide more housing opportunities. It may not bring the prices down like everyone would hope, but it brings more opportunity into them. And Nathan heard the same discussion from. So the idea was to take the lines that say two-family and where it says now in A1 and A2, that that goes to a special permit to the zoning board, to try to take that regulation and make it permitted.
So that would be by right now.
Just by right.
That would be by not right. So the P means it would be by right for two-family dwellings in A1 and A2.
Right. So the, that, that was the first big step, because that is gonna potentially involve a discussion with the Zoning Board of Appeals or others who think that it, there should be some regulation. But if you take it strictly from an affordable housing angle, that's why the planning board has to oversee it, because you may not all agree. But if you, they're trying to emphasize the fact that if you use the lot size here, now the lot size is, for instance, in A1, the minimum lot size is 40,000 square feet. Okay. It seems evident that at a 40,000 square foot lot, you should be able to fit a two-family in there and solve all the other dimensional regulations and the open space and everything else you need. When you get to the A2, the regulation says the minimum lot size is 12,000. However, if you wanna put a two-family, it must be 24,000, just exactly like the plan we signed.
Yeah, okay. And then after that, it's like 600.
No, there's no, there's no provision beyond that. At least 24,000 for a two-family. So the plan we signed earlier, the ANI, as you saw, was 24,000 and 57 feet, 24,000. They're going tomorrow night to the Board of Appeals, gonna say, can get approval to put a duplex on there, a two-family, on those two lots. That's what they're gonna get. So why not have the planning board just make a decision that this is, in the best sense of this is a town, we have enough land size there. We're not squeezing it in someplace and just letting it move forward. So that's, that's a big step. Now, if you look across the rest of the line under two-family, you see it's permitted everywhere else, except when you get into industrial in a hospital district and so forth. So that was the driving thought behind that, was we have the lot size. We already have the dimensional requirement that says the two-family in A2 needs to be double the size of a typical A2 lot. So why not just, as a board, say, you know what, we think this is a good change and go from there. Let me take what the, get whatever the feedback is, I guess.
I'm gonna ask you, yeah, I'm just, again, I'm glad, I'm asking.
So in essence, it gets exactly to what you want.
Yes.
That everything on the line is a P.
Yep. So, and I'm asking the question so that we have this discussion, because it's gonna come up again if we have a hearing. I live in A2, I believe I live in A2. And so, but my lot's not that big, but it was prior, so it's okay. The lot next to me is a single family home. And they, and this is, this is not happening. This is a, for instance.
Yeah, yeah.
They want to have another unit built into their house. Does this give them permission to do it by right? If it's an already existing single family home?
Well, there's gonna be a twist to it. And the twist to that is gonna be the accessory apartment. So in essence, there's gonna be two options that potentially, if this gentleman, this landowner had a lot that was over 24,000 square feet and made all the side and front setbacks, the frontage, the side setbacks, the rear setbacks, all the combinations, the open space requirement. If all of those dimensions worked and he could make that into a two-family, I would say, yes, he can do it.
So the question is, if it's a single family home that meets all the requirements and all they do is put a locking door on the basement and say, it's another unit, can that happen?
No, that doesn't count. By definition, a two-family is completely different than that.
Yeah, you know, but I'm just, this is, this is where I see the conversation going. Because if, if, you know, there are some people who think that density is bad. No, and, and I understand what you're saying, but there's definitely, so there's, there's a definition as to what a two-family is, and that would not meet that.
I just wanna make sure that this is, you know, that's all.
And remember, they still would need to go to the Building Department for all that stuff.
All the life safety.
Yes.
Let's put it this way, those who are putting illegals in the basement aren't going to the Building Department to do it.
No, no, no. So if I read this, if I continue on with this, you're also discussing that townhouses and multifamily for A1, A2 would go from, what is, and no, not permitted, would become special permit from the board, us.
Planning board.
SPP, Planning Board, from us. As well, and then general business district also would change from special permit, ZBA, to special permit, us, Planning Board, okay.
So I'm taking a risk when I change this from, anything that I change from CBA to a special permit for this board. I'm taking a risk because the thought behind it is that we see in general more construction details. We see more street things. We see more A and R plans. We see, we visualize the town. And it's more of a residential look. My preference to leave the special permit by zoning falls more into the variant, not the variants, industrial end. If there's a special permit in an industrial zone or a commercial zone. But because we see more of this residential all the time, I think the planning board is the place to give those special permits out. We have the same exact authority under the bylaw as they do under a special permit, when it's our special permit. Same as their special permit. Same conditions, we can come up with any angles that we want on it. So that's just, again, a way to take it a step up.
Still be work for the Zoning Board of Appeals to do.
There's still, could be work.
There's gonna be plenty of work for them to do.
The big change here is the townhouse multifamily is to take it from a no to like.
A special permit.
You know, I shouldn't use that example we just saw up there, but that potentially could be, we talked about this before.
Shake them out on.
Yeah.
There's two in there. Panther Place, there's multiple along Washington Street over there. Curly Circle, there's multiple in there.
Right. And what happened when, when I, I'm sorry, Danny.
Go, go, go.
When we, I looked over this and talked to this, you know, with Alan and so forth, and Alan did some work on the zoning, and I looked back on the zoning. And I'll tell you how, what, what happened. And I think, I don't know if I mentioned it at this meeting or not. So up way, just beyond the hospital, across the street from the hospital, we have Autumn Ridge, which is an over 55, well-done condominium.
40B. Yes, it's a 40B.
Not a 40B. I'm gonna get to it. So I haven't told you this. So the Smiths, when you drive in on the left, there's a nice contemporary home. Richard and Sheila Smith lived there. They walk up and down the street by my house a lot. I became very friendly with them. So when I was talking to the Affordable Housing Committee, and I made a comment at one of these meetings myself, that it has affordable units in there. Therefore, there was discussion that was a 40B. So I went and talked to Richard Smith and Sheila one day, sitting in their living room, and I said, hey, tell me how you built that 40B. He said, that's not a 40B, never was a 40B. What happened was, the zoning changed and the former zoning, special permit by planning board, could be multifamily. That's how we got units all over town. And somehow it changed. So if you go back in the history of the zoning over here and you look back, you'll find, maybe two revisions back, that, yeah, we've allowed multifamilies. So how'd the affordables get there, Mr. Smiths? Well, the affordables got there because of a meeting just like this. He said, where Connie Sullivan and someone else on another board said, geez, wouldn't it be great if you could put a few affordables up there? So he told me they asked for six affordables and they gave him four. So it was never a 40B. I was wrong about thinking it was a 40B. And there was language around everywhere that it was a 40B. So this whole concept of putting it with the planning board ends up with that negotiated type of thinking that we can do right here in this room.
Yeah, I agree.
And come back with multifamilies if people really think they're gonna work and do something like that over, you know, again.
And to that end, this evening's discussion of a possible change at Stratton Hill.
Correct.
Let's go back to the gas station out on, the all-town gas station. We had two parties fighting, and by the end of the meeting, they had their jackets off, sleeves rolled up. We got a decent project out of it.
And, and, and so like on, on, on the multifamily, like, just like with, when we were looking at the Stratton Hill project, you know, a development like that with, you know, a triplex, you know, a couple triplexes, like a nice big condominium development like that with, because that's what a multifamily, we would say is, you know, a tri, anything bigger than two. So like a triplex or quad. You could do mid-rise, like there's, there's a lot of options and there's, if you look in the A1 and A2, there's.
Put a mid-rise on Stratton Hill.
No, 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 not in Stratton Hill, but I mean in a sense of, you know. In, there's a bunch of properties along Sandy Pond that's, and there's like a, right along the rails, the road, railroad. Blank there. There's some big, like five, six, seven acre properties that are ripe for development for multifamily. And not only that.
An R for one tonight.
Yeah. And so, as well as, you know, another thing that I wanna do is like about senior, you know, over 55 development. But that's something like that, you know, some developments that have multifamily, you can get these dense, you can get it much denser and less impacts. It, it's just, it's, it's going to bring much more inventory to air, which depending on how much inventory you bring into it, it can help a lot of people actually get into air.
And the other twist to it is that, and when you go to the inclusionary housing requirement, it mostly talks about multifamily.
Yes.
You know, those extra units is typically in the multifamily category. So to get more affordable, we need more multifamily.
Correct. Line me up behind Ken Diskin on this idea. I'm just asking the questions because, these are the questions that will come up.
Yep, well, there'll be a lot of questions.
You can't put a two-family next to my house, it will ruin the value of my property.
Most people can say that, but are gonna say that, but that's not true.
And what about the ADUs? Can you bring us, any discussion on that?
Yeah, so on the ADUs, the 750 would, removing that 750 will help the ADU. I think the problem with the, that I see with our ADU bylaw is that calculation of how you, what the square footage is. It's 20% of the, or 25% of the total square footage of the house, which if, with the 750 is nearly impossible.
Is it 20% or 25?
25%. 25%, which is nearly impossible to make it work.
Get to 3,000.
With, you need such a big house. And most people don't have that big of a house. It's just, it's not normal to have that big of a house. So removing the 750 and also I provided to the working group, one of the bylaws that we used in Salisbury. And in Salisbury, we received almost, you know, seven to nine applications every year. And so they, they, that is one of the bylaws that's used very frequently over there. And the way they do it is they just have a max of up to 900 square feet.
Interesting. If the ADU unit square footage changes, similar to Salisbury, which is a beach community, I see certain sections of this town doing it right away.
Did you say 900, 950?
900.
No, thank you.
And, and, and the way we got to the square footage in the ADUs, and again, no dispersion on anybody, is that was a negotiated number. Because ADUs were new. And when that, when that happened, there was still a bad taste in people's mouths about what was going on in other towns around here, in other towns we're familiar with.
Let me ask, so, so let me ask this. So the, so the three topics, the 750 minimum for the living unit, expanding the two, the two-family, multifamily in A1, A2, and in some instances, the general business, and then finally ADUs. Has your group also talked about parking or is that outside the purview of the group that you're with?
Parking, we have not talked about park specifically.
And, and, and so with the recent ITE manual just coming out, I'm gonna actually look into buying that so that I can see what they have for updated numbers. Because, you know, as, as they have new, you know, the new manual each year, they, they were on the 10th, I believe now.
So, yeah, and MRPC's got two, two issues back.
Yeah.
It's an expensive thing to purchase, so.
I'm sorry.
No, no, no.
Yes. The reason I ask is that the whole goal with their group is to be able to come through a process that we can present a warrant to town meeting in the spring. And I was wondering if, and maybe this is too ambitious, if we would wanna propose any adjustments in parking as well for the spring, even if it's separate from the working group you're currently on, maybe it's not doable?
I, I don't think that that's doable for, just because when it comes to the parking, that is something that you need to do a lot of research. You're gonna, I, I would need to meet with some traffic engineers, talk to them, see what they're proposing. You know, you gotta ask around to some developers, you wanna see what it is that they actually see at their, you know, at their retail spaces.
That's fair.
It's a, it's something that's quite extensive, I think. And I think you have an educational challenge.
We do.
In that, in this community, cars still figure very importantly in people's lives.
So I think strategically then, what I'm hearing is, if our goal is to actually get practical stuff moving forward, that it makes sense right now to focus on these three areas, the 750, the multifamily, the ADUs for the warrant. And perhaps next year, we can really start investigating parking, doing the research, get the ITE guide and start doing, so we're gonna stagger this.
Yes, exactly. And I know there's, there's a, Alicia wants to look at also updating the inclusionary housing bylaw. We did discuss that as well. And so there's, there's more that they want to do. I don't think we'll be able to get all this on, on for spring. I just, that is, I think, too much. Especially with spring being, you know, with the budget, there's already so many warrant articles already. I think really, we're gonna wanna focus our, focus it to the ones that we think we can get for spring.
That's fair, though. I just wanted to ask it.
You need to be holding your public.
Right, because we need hearings.
You're talking March.
Well, so January is when the warrant opens, so we'd have to, you know, it's, there's a, there's a lot, there would be a lot of legwork to be doing, to be, get done between now and when the warrant opens. So it's, we just need to.
What point do you feel?
And so I think just when we do end up meeting again, we'll be discussing timing and what we really think.
I just had to clarify about what we can do, what can't be done, what's realistic. Cause I'd rather realistically pursue something that can meaningfully cross the goal line, rather than clutter it up so much with a wish list and nothing gets done. So I just wanted to know where those lines were, so that we have a sense of focus for where we're going.
And I think at the next meeting, we'll have a better understanding as to if all three, or if it's two or one, I think we'll be able to have a better understanding of that.
I can make the suggestion, sorry.
Yeah, go ahead.
Town manager's budget, the, you just got a copy of it. Robert publishes every year where you have to be on these dates to get your budget ready. The budget schedule. It's got, yeah.
That, we're getting them December 1st, I believe is our, is when we're gonna get the.
Well, you can get last year's, I'll send you the copy. It was in, it was in the meeting last Tuesday night. But you may find that, that would be something that would be very helpful for the planning board to have. Because then, then it lays out when you have to have your meetings, when you have to have your public comment section and stuff like that, so.
Good, great.
I'm agreeing with Danny that these probably are the three big things, but I think we wanna keep in mind maybe the order, the 750, definitely number one.
Yes, exactly.
So I guess they're all, to my mind, they're all equal. They're all, they should all go through. But the important thing to remember, he's got it written here, discussion of multifamily uses A1, A2, that's not the entirety of the thought.
I know.
Yeah.
It's this page.
It's the whole page.
Okay, as long as you know that. And I'll give you an example of this page, okay?
And there's gonna be, we're gonna have to have discussions with the zoning board, so that's.
Yeah, we might have to invite them. But here's an example, okay?
Yeah, we do.
I wanna show you something that's interesting. So we have this number 1.7, dwelling units at grade and a commercial building and all this other stuff, okay? If you're in the downtown air form-based code, it's a special permit by the board. If you're in the form, the West Air Village is P, it's permitted. Should be permitted in both. If you're in the form, the West Air Village is P, it's permitted, should be permitted in both.
Yeah, what hap, is that?
It's just a mistake. So we're finding, just, they should go around that table, you're finding this errors, you know?
So prior to the last go around with the bylaw, that table was superseded by language that was in the actual bylaw.
Exactly.
And so what we did, if you all recall, who was involved in it at the time, we said, wait a minute, the table exists, that becomes the ruler. And what we're discovering now is there are going to be situations when we couldn't focus on it, couldn't get it all done. And that's, but this is, and now, because, because, you know, you get Cal Goldsmith sitting here saying, well, what do you want to do? 5.2, 5.3, other table. And he, he was correct.
All right, so my eyelids are getting heavy.
Yes.
And I was hoping if, if there's no objection, like to move on to see if, can we get these two minutes approved and call it a night? Was that fair for everybody? But I just want to say thank you for the update. It was worthwhile having the detailed update because it is that important. And it's one of the few times we can be proactive rather than responding to just whatever, to what applicants bring to us. So first, do I have a motion to approve the July 11th, 2023 minutes?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
I abstain.
Move to approve, October 24th, 2023 minutes.
I'll second. Uh, any, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Yes.
Chair votes aye. Uh, motion to adjourn?
So moved.